That was official, by the way.
Yeah.
Very official.
It was good, good job.
All right, let me call to order the, what's today? The 15th?
It is.
The July 15th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Puentes.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
And Mr. Wadyska.
Here. Terrific. This is my first meeting here in the new council chambers. I missed last one, so very, very exciting.
Can I make a quick motion before we adopt the agenda to modify the agenda to move items 7A, 8A, B, and C up above item number four? Hold our meeting. Then we could adjourn our meeting, join City Council for a joint work session, come back in here, not for the continuation of the meeting, but just for our work session. That's my motion.
It's a great motion and a wonderful idea.
I will second that motion.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Terrific, all right. So initially, we, as Mr. Rankin said, we were initially supposed to go in, or maybe he didn't say, we were supposed to go into a joint session immediately, but we're going to redo the agenda so that we can meet with them in, you know, 15, 20 minutes. This should be a quick process. Basically, items 7A are going to be the commission liaison assignments and then just some planning commission reports and planning director reports. So let's move to seven, what was previously 7A. And the reason for this is because we have a new planning commission member. So let me formally welcome you, Cory. And what we normally do as background, I'm bringing up the report, what we normally do at the first meeting of the year is we all get some liaison assignments where we interact. And as someone who was involved on the Environmental Sustainability Council, I suspect you had a liaison, so with Mr. Stevens, right? Where are you? You're off to my left now. Wow, it's usually on my right. So we just need to figure out who's going to take Lindy's place. She was very active in these liaison roles. She was involved in the Arts and Humanities Council, the Economic Development Authority, though she did that with Mr. Stevens. Do we need two members for that? Or that, I knew she wanted to be involved with that. Is it a requirement?
It helps just to have someone there if the other person can't make it.
Okay.
Do you absolutely need it? Probably not.
Probably not.
I don't know if we need it for the next, you know, six months, basically, is what we're
trying to cover here before we make new assignments. And then she was also involved with the Housing Commission. So are you, I'm sorry, I'm just, let me bring up, oh, you have it in front of me. It's like confusing. It's on two screens now.
Yeah, yeah. They have it up.
Whatever.
All right. All right, so we could, Cory, are you familiar with the Arts and Humanities Council and the Housing Commission? Those are the two. And I don't even, I don't even know if, how often the Housing Commission meets.
They're monthly.
They're monthly?
Yeah.
And the Arts and Humanities Council? I don't remember her even, Lindy giving us even a report on the Arts and Humanities Council, if they meet.
She did a couple times, because they're big things they're working on, trying to put more outside art, like more murals and sculpt, like, you know, things outside, sculptures and things. So she talked about that a couple times. I don't know how often they meet, though.
Well, technically, they meet the third Thursday of each month.
There you go.
But I don't know how often they do that. So is this something that you would be willing to take the places of those two? And then that this is a very simple process? I think for right now, we can just do the Economic Development Authority without her. And again, I think the Arts and Humanity Council is really limited. And the Housing Commission, I don't think this is that, she was very involved with the EDA. I mean, she attended all those meetings.
She was. And also Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I took that over for, a couple months ago, because she was like, cut too much.
Right.
I guess what we're saying, will you fill in for her on those two?
I'm fine subbing in for her on those two.
Yeah, and then in January.
Yeah, yeah, we'll reassign it.
At that point, you may have just determined that that's not a good time when you're going to talk to them.
Okay.
Where can I shop for?
Okay, well, that makes things really simple. So let's, I don't think we need a motion for that, right, Gary? Just say that.
No, we don't need a motion for that.
Mrs. Weiss is going to take over for Mrs. Hockenberry for the Arts and Humanity Council and then the Housing Commission.
Maybe staff could reach out to whoever is the city liaison to that and send them an email and ask them to email Cory, so she knows what they're doing. Because sometimes, a lot of these groups take breaks in the summer, so they may even be on break right now.
I think this is an excellent idea.
Because Rex and Park's on break, so.
All right.
Okay. We've finished this agenda. I don't know if there's more to talk about. I'm sorry I missed Lindy's event.
Oh, the surveying items.
Reports?
No, no, we finished this item. Now we're going to move to item, what was formerly eight. You're bringing it, it is weird to have these two screens. I apologize for being flustered here a little bit.
Yeah, the other screen just has the agenda.
Yeah.
Gary, when can we get Wi-Fi?
Yeah, is there Wi-Fi yet?
It's not in the building yet, so.
It's not in the building?
Then it's coming.
Something is connected to something.
Wow!
There's Wi-Fi floating around. I don't know if it's accessible, but.
Yeah.
All right.
I have the ability to see.
Where am I connected to? Oh, Verizon SM, whatever that is.
That's the school board's?
Planning Commission, planning commission.
I don't think so.
Okay, well, again, I apologize, I'm trying to manage these two screens here. Let's move on to what was formerly item 8A, the planning commission reports. Do we have any reports from anybody recently? Mr. Stevens?
I don't have any reports, but I've been trying to follow the Fairfax County citizens' input process to their comp plan update regarding the grad center and the metro site comp plan changes. They were supposed to originally meet tomorrow night, but they canceled that meeting, so they don't meet again until September.
Okay. Yeah. Any other reports by planning commissioners?
I'll make a, well, not if it's a report, but I think, as somebody who in town was actually directly affected by that flooding last Monday, I think it, you know, just underscores, you know, the, some of the projects that we see, I mean, with the issue of stormwater, which we bring up sometimes, you know, maybe we focus on other issues more, but I think it really brings home the issue that, how important it is. And it's something that I know I've heard from neighbors, and I know my neighborhood was not the worst affected by far. There were neighborhoods in the city that were much more severely affected. But I think it certainly underscores the importance of looking at that and being very mindful of that, both in our comp plan work, as far as our long-range planning, but also, you know, project by project. And how important, you know, sometimes like stormwater is kind of a, it's important and it's something that's required, but I think there are times where we don't realize, you know, the far-reaching effects that it has, both within the city, beyond the city. That was an extreme event, you know, obviously, you can't always plan and engineer for something at that scale of extreme, but it just drives home the point that every little bit helps. And so when it comes to looking at impervious cover, when it comes to looking at, you know, both what are quantity, quality, and being mindful of that, an event like that really, really does drive that home. And so, you know, this, I mean, again, I'm sure everyone would agree, it was an extreme event and maybe not likely to, hopefully not likely to occur again, but given what, the way things are going, who knows? And so we should just be mindful of it. It really underscores. And also, we should, I'm sure we all know folks who were affected, you know, in some way or another, and whatever the, I don't know what we can do as a planning commission, but I know the city is doing some things to reach out and help folks who were, suffered, you know, some significant damage and loss as part of that. We should just be mindful of that and keep those folks in the city who were affected in our thoughts.
I agree. Very nicely said. I don't, again, we're not much that we can do here, but be mindful of it and understand that when we hear those applications. That's a good point. All right, well, seeing no other reports, let's move on to the planning director's
Thank you. Once again, welcome to Cory Weiss for joining us with the planning commission. And I gave her a binder with some, plenty of good background information, so some information on the commissioner training programs in the state. Also attached to your materials on the planning director's report is the work plan, and it shows the continuing progress on the items. So if you have any questions on those, more than happy to entertain those. Upcoming on your agenda, August 5th, we have a fairly full meeting. We have three public hearings tentatively scheduled. The George Mason High School site plan, which would be the second part of the site plan approval, the Phase 1B. We have a work session on that to, later tonight. That site plan shaped up as in good shape moving forward at this point. The comprehensive plan chapters on the housing and demographics, we'll also on August 5th have a final public hearing on those two items. We also have a work session on those jointly with the council momentarily. And then the Mary Riley Stiles Library Expansion, that's tentatively scheduled as well, and those would be noticed as required by law. Also, the downtown park naming, they're, they've sent us a referral on that, not necessarily for a formal action, with some naming information will be coming to you in terms of the selected names. And then they're just looking for comments, not really additional recommendations at this point, but comments on the name that's recommended. So they're finalizing that now, and so we'll have information on that for your next meeting on August 5th. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, then, let's see, Paul will be joining us again on August 5th. He'll be back.
Okay.
So he's, yeah, gonna be out the rest of the month.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think we, Mr. Fuller and I talked about this agenda. There are four action items, but I think after the work that we do this evening with the joint session with the city council and the work session on the George Mason High School site plan, I don't see this being overwhelming to move those things on pretty quick. So pretty heavy, as Mr. Fuller said, for an August meeting, but I don't, I think it's really doable without staying here really late because of what we're doing tonight. I don't have anything else. And correspondence, I don't believe I've received any correspondence. So that would close out that. So we would then be complete with our meeting. Normally, the way we are doing this is we do not adjourn, but in this case, in the past, in the past, we used to adjourn and then hold the work session just sitting in place. And we film the work sessions these days. So I don't know what the story is in terms of like the camera. I know, I know we're going to leave right now and go to the joint session. Should I adjourn the meeting, which is different than we normally do it, or?
I think we should do it this time, and then, I think we should do it this time, and then what, I've already briefed the camera person on this change.
Okay.
So they're aware of it as well. So, but they will be filming the George Mason work session back here.
Got it.
And then there's additional filming that's happening next door when we go over there, so.
Okay, all right. Well, if that's the case, then let us adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
We adjourned, and how long do we think we're going to be, till we're back here for the work session? Do you have a sense of how long this joint session is going to take? Is it an hour, or?
Probably, yeah, plus or minus.
Okay, all right.
Because it's two chapters.
Well, for all the people who are in the audience, we'll be back in about an hour.
Yes, we're ready. So I knew you weren't here the last meeting, so there's, we don't have a present, or the applicant doesn't need a presentation really tonight. We've just put the site plan up for, to have it up on, and you've got it on all your screens. The last time everybody pulled the chair up and they sat at the table and we had the work session, it also worked pretty good just to have the applicant sit here and then just come up to the microphone on the right when they're speaking, so they'll go back and forth to that. But anyway, so I'll be happy to start it off with background.
Okay, that'd be great. Are you okay sitting where you are and coming up to the mic, if that's okay? If we've already done the sit-down, I apologize for not missing last meeting, but.
If they weren't here, that was different.
Different, okay.
The Library.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I see your, I thought you were saying something different. All right, well, why don't you kick it off, Mr. Fuller, and give us the background, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant to, I guess, tell us what the changes are and start the discussion.
Yeah. So the work session tonight was a precursor to the August 5th final public hearing that's scheduled, and it's a follow-up to our May 20th action on the, on the first phase of the site plan. The Phase 1B was approved on May 20th, which was the pre-construction activities related to the site. And we hadn't done that before, and then, so what we've scheduled is the second half of it, the really final construction phase would be Phase 1B, and that would be the subject of the August 5th final public hearing. So at this time, the site plan is nearing final form and being in compliance with the city codes, zoning subdivision. It's pending a response from the applicant on the last staff comments in a letter dated July 3rd, and that's in your attachment 7. You can see that. And so the applicant will be submitting the final revised site plans, which is expected this week, and that'll be timely for the August 5th final public hearing. Just starting on line 25, we've listed the waivers and modifications. That'll be the action considerations. Let's call it the subcategory of the overall site plan approval. And listed with those waivers, there are six total, five of which are related to parking lots and landscaping and trees and islands associated with that. The last one is a requirement for a subdivision consolidation plat. We're actually waiving that requirement technically. The applicant is not responsible for that where they normally are. The planning commission has already approved separately in advance that related plat, so they'll include it as an informational item, though it was approved by a third party in terms of the work and so forth. In looking at the phasing, as I talked about, Phase 1A, the site plan was approved on May 20th, and that allows for a limited development and pre-construction activities, which have begun on the site. Those were defined as construction, fencing, site demolition, rough grading, elevation, foundation, footings, utility work to serve the existing concession buildings. Phase 1B, which is once again the subject of the August 5th, and will be the final complete site plan approval, would be on August 5th, and that would include allowing all other construction activities, which normally would occur subsequent to the final site plan approval, which is a prerequisite for any permits typically. Phase 2, which was always laid out with this site plan, is the trapezoid area that was in between both the high school project and the developer project adjacent. And so that is proposed for minimum of 193 parking spaces and site work that would be required to do that. And that would be the subject of a site plan amendment to the final site plan approval, 1A and 1B combined. And that would be scheduled in late summer or fall, when the applicant's ready and applies for that. So that site was always left out because it was in play with the developer, and so now that that's been finalized, it'll be the responsibility of the schools to finalize that into the final parking configuration, which would give them the 400 spaces that they've committed to and required under the site plan. In terms of the items that the staff listed in the, the letter that went out on July 3rd, there was a short list of some pending site plan labeling items and some information revisions on the plan sheets and some labeling of some of the bonding elements. And then in regard to the future final phase, you know, referring to the pending submission on that and just some labeling and that requirement for 400 spaces needs to be met with that Phase 2 application. In addition, stormwater management comments were provided in regards to bio-retention, hydraulic grade lines, and final elevation notations are required or corrections if needed. And so that information's been given to the applicant, and they're finalizing that. So the Department of Public Works staff has completed their review of the stormwater requirements in the site plan, and they see it being in conformance, and they've issued their final comments, which are minimal at this point. So they're comfortable proceeding, and the final submission this week should address all their comments, and they'll be checking those. That'll be a brief review by them, because the revisions have been substantially made. So the schedule then is, we have the work session tonight and the public hearing and final action on the site plan on August 5th. So at this point, we wanted to just have this opportunity to just give you a quick update, since the last time we met, we had to break the site plan into two approvals, and so lots happened in between, and so we're nearing final action on it, and the staff is proceeding with, that this plan has been wrapped up and is meeting the city codes, and the submission this week should reflect that, and we'll be checking that and then scheduling accordingly with the date of August 5th. So at this time, if the applicant has any comments they want to make, you're welcome to. I know they hadn't planned to make a presentation tonight, and so I'll turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you, Gary. Just really quickly, I think Gary covered pretty much everything. We've been, the last few weeks and months, we've been working really close with the staff to get to this point, so we're actually pretty excited about that. Thanks, everybody, for doing that. Some minor changes that were, that were different from the last time include substandard parking that we talked about, that was in front of the middle school, so we've been able to solve that, so that's, that's not going to be a issue, which is why we didn't need to go to BZA at all, so we're happy about that. And as far as the Phase 2 that Gary talked about, the trapezoid, when we come back with the amendment, we do plan on addressing some of the comments that were provided by the commission as well as the client in terms of how the Grove and the North Plaza works with the proposed parking. We've also been communicating really closely with the development adjacent to us, so we've had some coordination in terms of where curbs are and locations of the bike lanes and things like that, so we've been working really close with them to get to this point. So we're excited about that. Other than that, you know, the changes are kind of behind the scenes, you know, they're number crunching and things like that. So, you know, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I got a couple of comments, but let me turn it over to fellow commissioners, if you have any other, any issues you want to bring up as a result of what you see here.
I just have a quick question, which is probably me just not paying attention. Attachment 11 is this cool parking chart, which I've seen many times. I don't know if it's been updated, but it still shows you falling off in spring of 2021. Is the parking sorted out all the way through the end? You know what I mean? Like, I know, like, in the summers, you don't have as many required spots, and in the school year, you do, but once this new school is basically done, but before we can tear down the old school and build the extra parking, what do you, what is the plan? You might have to push a button.
Okay, there we go. Yes, so when Gilbane finishes the project in December of 2020, they're then going to finish the trapezoid. So there's going to be an interim period between December of 2020 and August of 2021 before the additional parking spaces come online.
Right.
During that period, and we're still kind of in conversations with the Economic Development as well as Virginia Tech, but we are going to meet that 400 count one way or another, whether it's utilizing the existing onsite parking at the existing George Mason High School or utilizing parking at Virginia Tech.
All right, so we don't, I know, we don't know. I just, I keep hearing that parking's been solved, and I have friends that, where are they going to park? I'm like, I don't know, they said it was solved. But the answer is one or the other. Either they'll tear down the high school and leave some parking available for us, or you'll go and someone will just fork over the money to park it.
Yeah, so there's portions of the high school that actually doesn't get torn down, so this, the northeast parking lot.
Yeah.
Of the high school, that's actually part of Phase B for the economic development, so that's one of the areas that we've talked about.
Okay.
If no opportunities available in the economic development site, we have a price quote from Virginia Tech, so that's our.
Okay, that's your fallback.
Yeah.
Good to have some leverage against those Virginia Tech people and their giant empty parking lot.
How many will that accommodate?
I'm sorry?
How many will that accommodate, Virginia Tech?
Will be short 180 something. It's somewhere in the realm of about 187 is what the trapezoid parking is, which is, that's what we need to accommodate between December 2020 and August.
Yeah, the deficit says, yeah, one is 175, and then the next winter is 187, which is plenty of spaces over there.
So just to comment on that, so with the Phase 2 application that'll be coming in the next few months, they will have a final parking plan that carries throughout the entire project. So that'll be part of your action, is to approve the plan that maintains the 400 spaces as needed or per the plan, so.
And our intent is to have, whichever direction we're going in, is to have that agreement as part of the submission for fall approval.
Mr. Krasner?
Just to confirm, I think, I mean, I read it, so I see it's in there. The storm, all the stormwater uncertainty that we had back in the spring, that's all been addressed. And actually, in light of the discussion we just had with the council, I mean, you're meeting, I mean, there are no waivers, there are no stormwater waivers. The project will fully meet the Chesapeake Bay and the city requirements, correct? Through onsite detention and even for quality? Are we meeting quality onsite as well?
Yeah, we are actually complying with all the state requirements for both quantity and quality control onsite.
Okay.
With the stormwater management design. We've been working very closely with Alan Dalton, the city reviewer, to address some of his comments, but we are in full compliance with the state regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Weiss.
Hi, just as a follow-up on the stormwater question, state regulation looks at the 10-year storm event. Is that correct? Right. I know with the West Falls Church project that's right next door, we've been asking them to look at, there's been some conversation of modeling the 25-year event. The event that happened last week was a 100-year event. Has there been any modeling, looking at the 25, 50, or 100-year storm events in terms of what that will do to the site?
We have modeled some of those additional storms, but the submission to the city is essentially to demonstrate compliance with the current regulations. We didn't bring our technical stormwater management design team here tonight, they could answer that further, but I know that we have modeled beyond the 10-year, as we typically do. We typically look at the 10, 25, and 100-year storm.
Anything else from other commissioners? All right, well, you know, my comments, we have seen this largely before. The waivers and modifications are certainly related mostly to the parking lots. You know, in general, I am not, in- You know, in general, I am not, in, in general, I'm not for these kinds of waivers. I, I think that the reason that they're in place is for some stormwater retention, but also making the, the appearance of these parking lots more pleasant and accessible to people and safer for movement of pedestrians through those lots. In this case, I have, you know, I'm willing to sort of look the other way in the sense that this, there's a lot of green space on this site. So while unlike other developments that we, that we typically look at, where the green space is, is very limited, here we are filled with numerous locations where there's lots of landscaping in general and obviously these big, these fields. So that has been my, my position here is where I'm like, well, I don't like these huge reductions. Because I don't think our requirements are overbearing, by the way, in our, in our parking lots. But it's all driven by this sort of construct that we have to have 400 spaces. And that's not been, that's a decision made by other people that this is an absolute requirement. I think we're, my, my own view on this is we're headed in the wrong direction on this. We're providing too much parking for this facility with the trends in transportation as we see them. And that, that is now guiding poorer parking lot design and less green space and that the interior landscaping is falling far short of what we should be on, on our parking lots. But because of the green space, I, I'm trying to make peace with the best I can. I, I would say that in normal situations, I would not provide these types of waivers. But, you know, when I look at the site as a whole, I see, you know, green fields everywhere. The multipurpose field, is that permeable? I, it is. Okay. And I, I just don't, I just don't like the idea that we're pushing so hard on these 400 spaces that seems to be an absolute non-negotiable requirement. But I, I am pleased to see that we got the, the size of the spaces correct and that, that resolved. But otherwise, these, these issues are, are acceptable, I guess, under the, the current situation and what we're trying to do here with this 400. To me, it seems like an arbitrary 400-space requirement. The staff report mentions this parking garage for Phase 2 in several locations. I know that's a holdover, but.
It was, yeah. It, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I don't know that we need to revise the, we don't need to revise it. But when this comes back, I think, just to make sure that we get.
Yeah.
The, the words parking garage out of, out of this document, since that seems to have gone away.
Yeah, we, we had tried to clean it up and I, I noted it on my copy tonight as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, look, I think I've already said it here. I don't, when we, when we see waivers that say, the requires that every parking space be less than 90 feet from landscaping trees, and then the, the reason we're not doing it is not feasible due to the parking requirements, that's, to me, such a unacceptable answer for this kind of waiver. But I don't, I don't have a solution at this point. So those are generally my comments, and we, we've talked about this at great length. I am curious about how the time that we've spent coming up with Phase 1B has impacted the schedule. Do we think that this is gonna cause a material impact on our ability to finish when we need, by substantial completion date?
No. Our, our schedule for the amendment coming either late summer or, or fall has no bearing the fact that we're able to do what we're doing right now with, with 1A and then, and then 1B. And the fact that the trapezoid is happening at the, pretty much at the tail end of the, of the project has no bearing. So it does buy us some flexibility. The biggest, the biggest driver on the time is really the GMP that's due to the client. So that, that's what we're working towards.
So I was, I think you just answered this, but I was specifically talking about the delay in submitting this Phase 1B. It was supposed to be, I think, this meeting where we are actually providing the action for Phase 1B, and now it moved out to August 5th. Is that three-week time delay causing an impact to the schedule?
It does not, because what we were able to do is secure a foundation to grade permit with the approval of Phase 1A. So that has kept the project moving. They started excavation last Monday, actually, with the foundation of grade permit. So we're on track to do foundation and footings. And then with the approval on August 5th, that gets us right on time to be able to start structure later in the summer, early fall.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that that's not causing delay. All right, those were my, those were my comments. On August 5th, I will, I will support the waiver of the, these, or that, these waivers as a result of the project and the requirement for 400 spaces. But it is not without some heartburn. Any other questions from the?
No, I just want to concur with you. I wasn't very happy with these waivers either. You know, and it's funny, I'm thinking about, on Friday, they say it's gonna get up to 99 degrees. And you look at a parking lot like that with so much pavement that doesn't have any kind of shading, and it's just a horrible amount of heat's gonna be coming off of that. And, yeah, it's just a shame that we can't get more in there. But perhaps in the future, as we see, we don't need as many parking spaces, we can retroactively go back and put in some.
I suspect that's probably an easy fix, but that's, that's a while, while in the future. And Mr. Stevens?
The, I guess this is for Mr. Fuller. The, meeting the 400 spaces, that, does that still eliminate the need for a TOD?
The, the 400 spaces is the code requirement, so they don't have to do TDMs in order to meet that. We've encouraged them to include those.
Sorry, I meant TDM. Is staff still thinking along those lines or is, because there's been some discussion in the past about still needing one?
I mean, in terms of, they're able to meet the requirements without it. You know, it's always encouraging to have one, and we've recommended it. But at this point, the, the team's not providing one, so.
If I may, one, one thing, I would encourage, I think, I believe the last submission, and certainly with the, the last, the final one coming up, we provide an exhibit that really describes the waivers and, and what we're able to do in relation to compliance. And to, to, to address your specific issue, Mr. Wodeska, the 90 feet, you'll be surprised because our lot is actually really tight. We're actually not too far away from that. Our issue's really the, the, the measures that, that call for a substantial amount of space. And because we're, we're being pressured by, as you all know, by everybody in the community to provide those spaces, you know, we, we've been put into a, you know, a hard, hard place. So I encourage you to look at the exhibit. I think it's, it's not as bad as it sounds on paper, but we, we certainly are cognizant of.
Given those constraints, then why wouldn't you want to do a TDN plan? Wouldn't it benefit you to?
I think there's a lot of, there would be a lot of different answers to that, but I think the, the pressures was to get more, I think, I think we've been asked for more than 400 spaces. And we've been using the 400 by the, by the, by the city as, as a way to say, that's it to our constituents.
Yeah, the 400 is by code, right? That's what I, that's what I understand. So.
But there's also been a lot of public comment on parking, a lot of fear that there won't be enough parking. So, I mean, I've heard it at every meeting I've been to with the schools.
Yeah, based on the community outreach that we've done over the past year, we did a lot of it heavily last year. I think many of you attended or participated in it. It, it was fairly split 50/50 within the city. And the 400 meeting the city code requirements was the compromise that we reached for the project at this point. If anything changes in the very near future, we're willing to kind of take another look at it. But right now, this is kind of the best option that we have to move forward.
Yeah. Look, we've been involved in this process for, you know, years at this point. And I understand the pressures and, and where the community is and various stakeholders. With, at risk of repeating myself, if this was, let's build a high school, or let's build a building similar to this high school and just the parking, I would push back on this very, very hard. But the site is much more complex than simply a building and its parking. So in that case, that's how I, I'm making peace with it. So, all right. These changes are minimal. I think we're probably ready to move forward on this on the 5th without much, without much issue. So thank you for coming before us and clarifying with the changes that we, that were made. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks and hopefully move forward on this pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. That was a short work session. I don't think we need to adjourn for anything like that. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.